I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the select board meeting for March 29th, 2021. This is a remote meeting. We're gonna start momentarily with the minutes. But prior to that, I would just like to add to the agenda if the rest of the board is willing to have a very short discussion at the end about returning to live meetings. Is that okay? Consensus on that?
Yeah.
Just a discussion, not consensus necessarily in doing it, but we'll take a look at that. So we'll start with the minutes for the select board meeting of March 15th, 2021.
I would move that we approve the meetings of March 15, 2021 as submitted.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the select board minutes for the, as presented in the packet for March 15, 2021. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is a yes. I'm assuming Catherine will be joining us momentarily. We'll proceed with warrants 38 and 39 in just a moment. We have some people here, Anna's here, and Mr. Ward, Jamie Ward is here. Are those items, Eric, that would be taken out of order to accommodate these individuals?
Yes, they would.
What items are they here for, I guess?
Well, they're here for the item, first one under new business, which is item 21-098, consider award of a contract for the FY 2021, 22 paving work.
Is, and both are here for that?
Yes.
Okay, so unless the board disagrees with the chair, we'll take 21-098 immediately after communications.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Actually, let's take that before board committees, commissions, and departments as well. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yours discretion.
Great.
Great, fine, thank you. So we'll move on to warrants 38 and 39 that were reviewed by Ralph?
Uh, aggregate total is 73,827.77. 23,315.66 of that is payroll. The vendor amount includes 8,618.37 to Anders Scotten Bank, which is various debt service payments. We have 7,599 to the Cobsey Watershed District. We finally have, and this may sound, you know, just a tad silly, but 3,584 to Custom Metal Roofs of Maine for the firehouse snow stops, which are now in place, which I'm sure will shed some rain in the spring. And the other big ticket item in this, in warrant 35 is 9,352.83 for health insurance to Maine Municipal. And the total for warrant 38 is 50,512.11. And again, as I say, the aggregate is 73,827.72, and I would move approval of same.
Second?
77, Ralph.
It's 77. I'll make the correction.
Well, yes, yes, my, don't have my cheaters on.
That's quite all right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the treasures warrant in the amount of, and this is warrants 38 and 39, an amount of $73,827.77. Is there any discussion or questions on the warrant? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is a yes as well. That's what we call the gentle warrant. That's the one without the school payment in it.
302,000 and change.
Yes. We'll move to select board communications. Do any members of the board have anything they would like to share with either the board, the public?
Yes.
Dennis, please.
Hello, I have three things that I would like to talk about if possible.
Go ahead.
Number one, I'd like to say that the nomination papers for positions throughout the town of Reedfield are available now. And if you are watching this, or listening to this, or you are any way interested in being involved in the way that your town operates, this is a great chance for you to be involved. Positions on the solid waste committee, positions on the select board, positions on the school board piece, you can find them on the town website, reedfieldmaine.org. But if you're interested in being involved in your town beyond perhaps a Facebook comment that you think is fantastically effective, then I suggest you go to the town office and find a way to be involved in the government of your town. Otherwise, someone else might, and you might miss out. So check that out. Number two is, I would like to say that if you haven't already gotten in touch with me about Heritage Days, we are formulating our meeting schedule. I love to do meetings, and I like to provide refreshments at my meetings, just so you know. We will be getting that out here soon, but just know that we are excited about the prospect of having our annual Heritage Days. And hopefully you can hear my dogs. They happen on August 13, 14, and 15.
Are you being invaded?
Sorry, Mike. We have three dogs right now. And the Heritage Days is going to happen, and we hope to have a robust participation from all of the town committees and boards. The last thing I want to say is kind of a random piece, but I want to make sure that it gets its due, so bear with me. Not only have high school sports been sort of altered by all of the pandemic, however, they have also provided a lot of relief and release for kids in our area, especially at Moranacook Community High School. I just want to throw a shout out to all of the teams that were enduring this past fall season, the winter season, and with the spring season looking like it may be somewhat familiar, then that is excellent. But I want to point out one particular performance in particular. I just want to say a very special shout out to Coach Travis Magnuson and the boys' basketball team at Moranacook Community High School. Not only this year were they undefeated against other teams that they played both up and out of their conference, normal conference, but they also won their postseason conference tournament as well. And to top it all off, local student Cash McClure was named the Maine Mr. Basketball, which is quite an honor to bring home to our little town here in Reedfield. So I just want to make sure that people understand that this is a special thing, that no matter what we've, as adults, have had to say about it, kids continue to endure and do a great job. And I think this is a great example of the way that when we make our commitment to the schools, no matter how big that payment is, we see that it pays off. So I just want to share that with you and say thank you.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Any other board members? Seeing none, we'll move on to town staff reports. Eric?
All right, thank you. I did put in the packet just recently, this afternoon, the treasurer's report for the month of February. And I'll just touch on a few quick highlights here before I turn it back over to you. But the check reconciliation has been completed through February 28th, and there were no unusual items or activity during that time period. The audit is still in process, unfortunately. You know, we haven't been able to get even a full draft from the auditor. So this is the last year of their agreement with the town, and I can say that we will be looking because we're just, we came so close to getting back on track, and then here we are again. So that's a bit of a disappointment, but we are, you know, able to move ahead and find a different auditor next year. The budget, the month of February was quite a busy month for the budget process. We had several iterations of the budget that were reviewed. We also had our capital planning meeting, which was quite productive and led to some very good discussion about the direction of town expenditures, including paving, which we're going to talk about tonight. As far as comments go, we should be about two-thirds expended. My report, I think I said 58%, but that was an error. I missed a month there, but we should be about two-thirds expended. And for the month to date, we're actually looking quite, quite good. On the revenue side, we have, February is the big month, or one of two big months for real estate payments, so that's helped out a lot. Also, we're continuing to see increases, year-over-year increases, in the amount of revenue collected for motor vehicles. So that area has been incredibly strong. There's some concern that it might flatten off as time progresses, and, you know, all the 0% interest and COVID payments go away, and people sought buying cars. But once they buy a new car at a high, high value, the excise tax continues to depreciate slowly over time, but it does maintain a lot of that initial, initial value. So in any event, we're seeing good trends there. As far as expenditures, we are about 8% over where we normally are. Again, that can be quite variable depending on what we have for capital projects. This year looks a lot more like it did two years ago when we were first working on the big push for the fire station. And so while we do have some additional expenditures, most of those are capital related, and most of those are offset either by borrowing or by use of designated and undesignated funds. So that's my treasurer's report for the month of February. Most things look quite normal. Always, there's a little bit of variation on the monthly basis, but year-to-date looks pretty stable.
Thank you, Eric. When we chose that auditor, the current auditor, I mean, the idea was actually they were going to be the solution to late audit presentations. And so do you know if this is due mainly to adjustments to COVID because they've had to work from home and things like that, or are you just concerned in general?
I'm concerned in general. I mean, the COVID piece has an impact, but I can't tell you how many times I've called them, you know, every week or every other week and gotten the answer, "Well, I've got to bring it to this person," or "Well, it's going to be, I'll have it to you next week." And it's been, you know, eight, eight weeks of that. So I do have concerns beyond COVID.
Great. Okay, that's informative for, for us. Does anyone else have any question for, questions for Eric on the treasurer's report? Anything else, Eric? You're in.
I guess I'll just give a quick update on the hiring process for the clerk and code officer. We did do a lot of work last week and have had a number of interviews. We do have two preferred applicants at this point, and I'm working on final, final discussions with them, some final vetting. But I expect that if things hold, that we'll be putting offers out for both of those positions this week with a fairly high chance of success in retaining those, those top applicants. And if not, then we have, you know, other applicants to go to and also a bit more time, I think, in both cases, but I prefer not to go there. We've been, we've been stretching out the code officer far longer than we should. But so anyway, good, good progress there. And I'm just quite pleased to have the budget ready and more or less wrapped up for review tonight.
Great. So Eric, we'll just slide right down to the awarding of the FY 21 and 22 paving work. I think everybody that was going to be here for that discussion or presentation is. So I'll just turn it over to you for that.
Great. Well, thanks, Bruce. So I'm gonna turn this over pretty quickly to Anna, who did most of the work on getting this together, getting it out, meeting with the contractors. And this was the first RFP that she really managed almost entirely solo. So I just want to say thanks to Anna for her work in getting that together. She did a fantastic job, developed some great relationships with the folks that she was working with. And we had a great result because of that effort. We had, you know, 10-plus, I think contractors gave us numbers. And everybody was comfortable. They had good information. There wasn't a lot of variability. There's always some outliers, but in any event, Anna did a fantastic job with that. So I'll let her talk about the process a little bit and, and the recommendation that we have going forward.
Hi, guys. Thank you. So there's a nifty bid tab. Did you guys get this?
Yep.
Okay. So we had 10 bidders bid on the paving project. What we're having paved is Plains Road is going to be done with the shoulders, done with three-quarter inch minus. And we're also including the intersection of Rat Mill Hill Road and Gay Road. The asphalt on Rat Mill Hill Road has failed, and we're going to take that out and repave 60 feet versus the 120 that's there and match the existing material. And decided at the pre-bid meeting on Gay Road, there is about a, about 200 to 300 foot, hard telling where the actual end of the pavement is up there. But we're going to cut out the first, we're going to cut out the first 60 feet of that. It seems to be more potholes and replace that with a 12.5 millimeter in the first 60 feet. We've worked with the property owners up there. They're all pretty happy about that. And we're going to be doing some tree shrub removal on the corner of Plains Road and Gay Road that are a site obstruction for oncoming traffic coming from the Mount Vernon side. Along with that, we're also paving Sturtavant Hill Road and doing the shoulders, and doing the shoulders on South Road after a couple years ago when we had it paved. So again, we had 10 bidders on this. You can see where I've highlighted the low bidders. After discussing this with the town manager, Eric, and the road committee, our recommendation is mainly paving, who also into, did get the last paving bid on South Road. So we are very satisfied with the work that was done, great communication and no issues around the paving project. So and Jamie Ward, who is the owner of Mainly Paving, is here today as well for that meeting. So is there any?
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you. And I'd like Jamie to just go ahead and introduce himself to the board. He's joined us. He's come all the way this distance by Zoom.
Yeah.
Jamie.
No, I'm Jamie Ward. I'm actually the owner of Mainly Paving Services. I also do the estimating, project management, kind of wear many hats and make sure things get done. So, and I look forward to doing the work for you guys. I enjoyed the last time we were here, last time we did the work, and I look forward to this one as well.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there any questions for Anna? And by way of Anna, perhaps Jamie? Or Eric? If not, I will take a motion on this. Catherine, please.
Do we have an estimated begin and end time for this work?
We have not set an exact end time, but we, in the RFP contract, it did say it would be done before the next fiscal year unless agreed upon contract between the town and the awarded bidder.
So by June 30th?
Ideally, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea, my intent is to, as soon as the roads unpost, to jump right on it and try to get it, try to get it finished up as soon as possible. And the reason I say that is because the liquid asphalt prices are rising, and there's no escalation in this. So I'd like to get it done in a timely manner if possible, so.
Yes.
That's excellent. Thank you for being willing to come to Reedfield and provide us a great job at a very good value.
Well, I look forward to it.
I would make a motion that we award the paving contract as stated by Anna to Mainly Paving in the amount of $337,854.30.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid on the paving contract to be awarded to Mainly Paving, right? Is that correct, the correct name? Okay, good.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the vote. Just for anyone who's watching on Zoom, we're required to go ahead and do a roll call vote, which is unlike what we do in person. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is also a yes. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, and we look forward to seeing the work done. Great.
I appreciate the work. Thank you.
Thanks.
You. Have a great night.
You. We'll talk to you soon, Jamie.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you. We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. Is there someone who will be reporting from the comprehensive? We're going to hear an update. Is that coming via you, Eric, or was somebody going to be here?
I think it's going to be me and Dennis. I had tried to work with the chair and vice chair, but they were unavailable this evening, unfortunately. So.
Well, let's get that, let's get that done and get it a review today or whatever you've got.
Yeah. So I'll just point out what I included in the, in the packet, which is the schedule that they have revised and also the committee assignments. And this is just to demonstrate the, the high level of work that's going into this effort. This was put together by, by the chair and consultation with the vice chair, myself, and KV Cog. But this is really Henry's product. Henry put this together for us to help lead this process. I think it's an exceptional tool. It was a multi-part spreadsheet to help move things forward. And this just shows the administrative capacity that we have with this committee. And I think that we're going to see a very high level of work from them. This past month, they had their, I guess it was, it was, yeah, in, in March, they had their first chapter meeting to discuss and review a draft chapter. And it went very well. I think that we're going to continue to see ownership on the part of the committee members, and that's going to translate into ownership on the part of the community with the, you know, outreach that they are planning. I feel very comfortable with this. I think that it's headed in the right direction. There's always hiccups here and there, but, you know, the strong core leadership and, and a very well-organized approach to this. It is a little bit later than we originally hoped. We were thinking town meeting in 2022, but that's just not quite practical, given, you know, some of the impacts of COVID and other factors. So their new landing spot is for approval in November of 2022, which in all honesty, might get, might get a bigger turnout and more vote, voter awareness. So I think it's a, it's a good approach. And I'll just ask Dennis if he wants to add anything.
Nope. I think you're absolutely right. It's been a great committee so far, and it seems like there is great leadership as well. I think everybody on that committee knows that this is a legacy sort of commitment. What you're doing leaves a lasting impression on Reedfield, and I think everyone takes it pretty seriously. So I'm glad to be a part of it and look forward to the future.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Eric.
Can I?
I have a question.
Sure, let's go ahead.
But you go first, Catherine.
Oh, thank you, Ralph. Eric, do you know if the committee is planning on putting updates into the messenger on a monthly basis?
I don't think they had planned on that. However, we could probably break up that schedule and plug that in so folks know what's going on and maybe what's upcoming so they could contribute. We can work on that. That's a great suggestion.
It just, it's that already their vehicle for getting the word out, even if it's just a quarter-page update on, "We heard about blah, blah, blah. See the minutes posted on the website." Um, yeah. Okay.
That's excellent.
A good suggestion. Ralph?
If I, if I read the packet currently, Greg Dergan has resigned from this group. Do we need to consider an alternative appointment at this point? His absence, if that is indeed the case, is going to be, is going to be a big minus. And for whatever reason, we're going to miss him. But do we need to fill that hole?
There are alternates.
Okay. There are, there are alternates that are appointed. I mean, we can certainly ask the chair in terms of workload, if one of those alternates needs to become permanent, or if there's, sometimes alternates prefer to be alternates, or if there's need to, to add someone. So that communication will occur.
Thank you.
In large part, it has. It's all being taken care of.
Oh, okay. Bingo.
Yeah.
I didn't even push the button. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you. I want to thank the budget committee for their minutes of February 4, 2021, the broadband committee minutes for February 18th, 2021, I'm assuming, not 2010, because I'm not sure how much broadband there was in 2010, of the level we're talking about. And the record for their minutes of March 10, 2021. I guess I want to note that these are very current minutes, so I really appreciate having such currency and update, and way of an update. We'll move on to public communication. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. 21-096 is to consider the appointment of Kristen Parks as the interim town clerk and registrar of voters. And I move that we appoint her into the interim positions of town clerk and interim registrar of voters. Could I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Eric, does this position end when you hire a new clerk and put forth the appointment for them?
Yes. And so technically, the clerk appointment is actually the town manager's responsibility. But as with all things, you know, the board certainly has a right to say no. And I also put this in as a way to notify you that we were having an interim and the fact that we needed an interim because of the activity with the budget and the upcoming town meeting. So, but yes, if, in the, in the appointment itself, it says up to June 30th or until sooner dismissed, or something to that effect. And that's my intent, is that as soon as we have somebody on board and, and ready to go, that we'll be making that change.
Thank you.
It's, it's never my intent to assert what is particularly your job. So I don't think we need to take a vote on this unless you want a vote on it, Eric.
The registrar is the select board's prerogative. So, but yeah, go ahead.
So we have that motion that I made on the floor, which is the appointment of interim town clerk and registrar of voters. Just, you know, in your mind, consider that first part of that, just a verification of the good choice of Mr. Dyer. And the other one is the appointment that we're making. How's that sound? May I call the roll? Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. 21-097 will consider the resignation of Greg Dergan from the comprehensive plan committee. And I would echo Ralph that that's a loss for, for us. I think he has a breadth of knowledge across the town. So it's very much with regret that I will move that we accept the resignation of Greg Dergan from the comprehensive planning committee, plan committee.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to consider that resignation with regrets. And a thank you to Greg for everything that he has contributed thus far, and will continue contributing in the town as he does. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Thank you. I did call Greg this morning just to thank him for his service. We've done 21-098. Oh, I feel like I'm just moving at a pace that's incredible tonight, but probably not, right? The next item is to consider revisions to the town manager's contract. And I'll start by giving some background on this and why we're doing this, and why in your packet you see a revised. And I'll start by giving some background on this and why we're doing this and why in your packet you see a revised contract. When I say your packet, I'm talking to the public in general, who might be either attending, watching on television, or might later watch this on YouTube, or just simply read the packet. Because that information's always out there. Eric was successfully recruited by another town fairly recently. The board believed that it was in the best interest to renegotiate a contract with him. This was not done in a fashion where, you know, anything other than good faith occurred. The board itself met and said, gee, we'd really like to retain Eric. It turned out that the town he was going to, he was one of two finalists. Not exactly sure what the sequence was, but there was an offer eventually made to him. And our offer was really not a counter offer. It was just really a parallel look, if you will, at his position and talking to him about our desire to retain him in good faith. And we undertook reviewing salaries for both our population and valuation level as a town. We were definitely on the low side of where we would want to be. And by the way, we're on the low side because we believe we have a high performing town manager as well. Don't turn red over there, but that's that's how this board feels. We also felt that it was important, as we discussed this contract, that not only, you know, did we want to be fair to this situation, but we also needed to realize that we were not in a competitive place if Eric did leave at some point with the kind of contract that we had. So we did renegotiate the contract. You'll see in the contract, there's a number of provisions that are changed. I would inform everybody that basically the bottom line to the town is negligible in terms of total costs. It looks like there's a very large raise involved, and there is. But what we're doing is reallocating some of his benefit costs to salary at his request and in negotiating or and I'm not even going to call it negotiation. It was a well-meaning joint discussion, if you will. And so with that, that reallocation to make sense for his situation and our salary requirements to be attractive, we felt it was important to do this. So that's that's basically the background. We did know during the process, because we all read the news, that positions were opening in Hollowell, positions were opening in Gardner, positions were opening in Richmond. I certainly joked with Eric a couple of times about, well, there seems to be a lot out there. And, you know, I I think we wanted to make sure he was committed and happy and within town of Reedfield. Does anyone have anything they would like to add to my long speech on this? Ralph?
Just very briefly, you nailed it, Bruce. But I think the responsibility of any town government body that that controls budget functions is to make sure that they keep and retain and have the facilities to do so qualified and valued employees. And I would say that this does that. I don't think it's an overreach by any stretch of the imagination. And I think it will stand the time of Reedfield in good stead for the foreseeable future.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to add that I'm very appreciative that Eric was willing to stay with us. You've done a fantastic job for the town of Reedfield, leading us through some older projects and some new ones. And you've done a great job with that, and this is a well-deserved contract.
Great.
I would also add, just thank you, Eric. And I think that when you when you look at Reedfield as a town, we make an investment in our schools and in our roads, et cetera. And I think this is a sort of commitment to having the right people. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I just want to say that I've been there since Eric came on, and it wasn't the easiest job when he first came on. So we really appreciate everything he's done for us.
Yeah, I guess I'll just wrap up by saying we've made it so much easier for him, though. We've had quite a few challenges over the years. I was really happy to be part of the group that hired Eric. Now, over five years ago, I believe, or close to that, and along with Chris. And so we made a great a great selection at the time. And as echoed here, this is the right thing to do. But it also is a key investment for our town in the long run. Because certainly in the course of a turnover of management, there's some loss of time and so on and so forth. So I'm going to move that we approve the contract is presented in the packet and that the town select board will execute it with their signatures along with Eric. And I'm sorry, Eric, after I get a second on this motion, I'll just ask you if you wanted the same thing. You don't need to.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the town manager's contract that's in the packet. Eric, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You're muted.
Okay, the guy can't function properly.
Wait a minute, let's take it back.
I just wanted to say I was muted. No, I really, I appreciate the the willingness of the of the board to work with me on this. As you know, I wasn't looking for this necessarily. Either the the offer in another town or the generosity from from the board when it came down to finding out what was right to maintain a relationship here, and I am committed and happy. So thank you all for that.
Great. Thank you, Eric. We'll move on with the roll, unless there's any other discussion. I don't think there is. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes as well. Thank you. So that contract will be at the town hall, and we can probably sign it with the next warrant papers or whatever we need to do. The next item is to, speaking of investing in employees, is to consider the employer-sponsored retirement plan options and directions. You've put some guidance information or actually this draft request within the packet. And I'll go ahead and let Eric you kick off on this and and maybe bring Ralph into the discussion as well as Chris, who were the subcommittee on this. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so the subcommittee had met a couple of times and gave a pretty, pretty good direction on where they had wanted to head in discussions with staff. I mean, Teresa was an active part of this as well. And so we ultimately decided that the best approach would be to put something out to to bid. The initial bid was much more focused on looking for a plan administrator and then moving into the secondary phase of of bringing in someone to help with financial management or financial advising, basically, for the employees and the group individually and collectively. And so Ralph and I did meet with a couple of financial advisors that we had that came highly recommended from other other towns or their managers. And so over the course of those discussions, we came to realize that we were, as they called it, looking at a three-legged stool where you have the financial advisor, the financial manager or the investment manager, and the financial, the investment fund. And so each of those parts has a different role. But it appeared as though the best way to approach this was to really try to bring in the first two together, the financial, the investment planner, investment specialist, and the plan administrator. And they have different roles, and I've been learning a lot about this as we go. The the plan administrator is there to make sure that we have a good, solid background document and to look out very broadly for the interests of the town and the employees. The financial advisor has a much more involved role in helping the employees perhaps pick what kind of investments they want to make. They're the ones that show up on a quarterly basis and give presentations to the to the employee group. And they're the ones that that we, the employees can go to if they have questions. Really, the the plan administrator might be the person that I would go to if the town had questions about something technical around a change in government policy or something to that effect. Or questions that the employees that we couldn't answer for the employees. So we were hoping to bring those two in really as a as a as the first pass with the recommendation of a preferred financial company, investment company. Not that we would have to go that route, but by bringing this in as a package, it consolidates things a little bit, but it also allows those people that are going to be working most directly with the employees and most directly with the town to come in as something of a package so that we can have a plan administrator that is comfortable with and is hopefully working currently with a financial and investment planner so that we can have relationships that are already existing rather than doing independent bids and kind of forcing things together that might not otherwise be a natural fit. So we're looking for people to come in and give us their best offer, their best proposal on how to provide really a full scope of services, but with a focus on those first two legs, the the financial advisor and the the plan administrator. So this is where we're headed. I think there's some good. This is probably the right approach for us. We did look also at main purse and found that to be a fairly unattractive option that was really at odds in a lot of ways with the type of control that we want the employees to have. We found that main purse was more or less a black box. You put in your money, and no matter how much money they made, you got a defined return. So it really wasn't wasn't quite what we wanted, but we did look at it. And so this seems to be close, very close to where we are, but with a better focus on management in the fact that we have a planned administrator where we didn't before. But it also brings in better service and these financial advisors that have the proper certifications to to be actively managing the funds, which our current advisor does not. And that was a change in federal law several months ago that we're trying to catch up with. So I think I've touched on most of the background for this. You know, we are comfortable with this RFP, at least as far as I understand it. I think Ralph said a chance to look at it for a while. And I'll just leave it. Ralph, if you have anything else, or you want to add something new?
Thanks. I think we're in pretty good shape with this RFP. When we originally crafted the first iteration, we did send it out to some prospective vendors that Eric had had determined might have an interest and might be good partners. And the feedback we got was was that we should basically expand the RFP, which we have done to include solicitations from financial advisor groups. We didn't want to make it a complete three-legged stool because I think we would have been overwhelmed with proposals from investment companies without having the other two other two legs in place so that we could properly vet them. So I think this is a this is a solid approach that gives us the two most important components we need to to move ahead. We need an ERISA compliant plan. That's what your plan advisor or third-party administrator is going to do. And we need a financial advisor that has a history of working with town employees, working with plan administrators, and helping us select the best investment company out there to represent the interests of the town and the employees as defined by the the document that the plan administrator will create. And to Eric's point about looking at the main plan, it's a defined benefit plan. That's not the way most small communities are going right now because of because of long-term liabilities that you just simply cannot forecast. And we would be tied to that, and it's a performance-related vehicle that has revenue issues for all the participants. And we might be tied to that down the road, and that's not the way we want to go. I think, at least from my perspective, we want to be independent, manage our own plan with the proper people in our stable to make sure that we have something that takes care of the interests of the employees and is a fiscally responsible plan. On a parallel track, hopefully tonight, we can get some sense from the board. I don't know that we need a vote, but one of the things that will come to the fore almost immediately after we accept a plan administrator is what's your funding mechanism going to be? How do you want to fund the plan? As I think most of you know, right now, we have a two-tiered system by contract. One, as I read the contract, says that we have a category of employees who are entitled to a 6% match of gross-based pay, rather, a 6% contribution of their gross-based pay and another 3% match should they choose to make pre-tax contributions. The second tier is for later employees who have come into the fold, who are allowed to contribute 5% of their gross-based pay pre-tax, and that the town would match up to that number. And I think several months ago, we had this conversation about fairness and manageability. The second tier, folks, in aggregate, you're looking at 10% versus 12% for the first tier. And in terms of manageability of a program from an administrative point of view, I think when we create this administrative document, we should have a plan contribution that has one level of contribution and match for all employees. And to that extent, I believe my sense of the committee feels that the six and three component would be the best way to go in terms of fairness to participants who have had long-term history, clarity, manageability. And it's a very, from my understanding of how these things work, it's a pretty middle-of-the-road contribution match formula. It's not rich. It's not, for want of a better word, cheap. And I believe Eric has put into the budget sufficient funds to to reach this accommodation, should that be the way we want to go. But I think we need, we need a sense of the meaning that six and three would be the way to go. And then Bruce, as long as you're on board, we're going to have to go back and talk to the union because this is the change in the contract.
Yeah, although it's a change in the contract that is beneficial to the other side of the contract. And and I and I would state that that's fine with me because we're doing what we think is right for the group and to provide this benefit, which is already stated. But to also, and you know, I don't think it's any small thing, what Ralph is mentioning in terms of manager being able to manage it. It's just simpler to manage it all on pretty much one level with a small group of employees like that. So Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, they got all the points.
Great. Thank you. So Eric, I think we could approve putting out this RFP. Would you like a vote to have to do that or just consensus of the board?
Consensus is fine by me. Consensus is fine by me. Yeah.
My only question on the proposal was I want to make sure we get responses. And is April fifteenth too tight of a date to get responses or or is this kind of a boiler boilerplate thing? We put it out to the right entities and we probably will get a pretty fast response.
I I expect we get a pretty fast response. Most, most of these financial advisors. Do have established contacts. It might be wise to give it an extra week. I just want to make sure that we, well, I was hoping to get it back in time for the April twentieth Select Board Meeting. But that might be overly optimistic. So I'll think about that and see if there's a better schedule. If we did it, had it do, you know, end of April and and. Chose somebody in in early May, that would that would work too, I think. I I was just. Hedging my bets, trying to to make sure we had ample time to get this in place for, you know, July one. But that's an arbitrary deadline also. So if we can do this and do it, I think more time would be better to get better results.
Okay, that's my only observation on it. Does anyone else want to speak to the the level of the contributions levels that that Ralph brought up? As I said, I'm fine with that. So that's just, but that's just a sense of one person. We don't all have to say anything in regards to it tonight if we don't want to. But that'll evolve. But anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. And I want to thank Ralph for taking the lead on this and Eric and Chris for. A great deal of of help on that. It's. Successful work by that subcommittee. Next, we're going to consider the a final draft, the FY twenty-two twenty-two budget and warrant. So. Basically, what I'm expecting from you, Eric, is I don't know if you want to share. Any information document-wise online or just want to refer to the documents. Mainly, what we're interested in is your. The changes, if you will, which you track very well on that change sheet. So I'm going to let you speak to the budget and then I'll take us through the warrant approval process. So there'll be two different pieces to this.
All right. So the the, I'm trying to think when the last time was that we visited this. Was it the last? Let's see, April, March?
Yeah, really, the last time we visited it was at the public hearing.
On the eighteenth, yeah, the public budget meeting. So I will, I'll highlight changes since that time. Which are, which are a few. We just have three, basically. The Select Board did discuss the fact that. That that you would like to see some accommodation made at my recommendation for. Administrative costs such as the the benefits and the. Retirement that we just talked about. So I did look at that and we moved. Everything that we thought was going to be possible. So in in short, we we covered our potential liabilities in all of those areas. And we're then able to drop out that twenty-five thousand dollars additional that had been put in the contingency fund to buffer for those unknowns. And as we became more certain about what those costs would be, including, you know, cost for my contract, cost for. The additional benefits, also the, you know, the final numbers on or the likely final numbers on on any bonuses. That all came together and the net result was another small reduction in the mill rate once everything was balanced out. So the the mill rate was set at fifteen point seven five. This does not include any change to the RSU budget. So that's very important. This shows an increase in the county budget. Increase in municipal budget offsetting revenues. And so we're, we're just a little bit better than we were when we had that discussion at the the joint meeting. But we have better information, so that's always a good thing. The the budget itself, I I don't think we really need to go into the whole. The the spreadsheets or any of that unless the board has a specific question. I I think what might make the most sense. Would would be to just talk about the budget in the context of of the warrant, which is the the new piece, at least for the public. The board got a draft copy of this. Probably four or five days ago, maybe a little more than that. And this is very similar to to what you received as a draft. This is a full draft, including all of the ordinance language that that we expect to see or will see. And all of the budget information brought into those articles. So there's, everything's been tied out and and reviewed. And so this is a full, complete. Draft for the warrant. Bruce, you had made some. Comments and some suggestions on a few items. I did talk with Chris Cheney about the school. And it looks likely their last day of classes is. Three or four days before this event. So it seems quite likely, but I have not received any final confirmation from him. So. I'm going to push on that this week. So I don't think we'll need to come back to make a change, but right now, I I think we're going with the best. Option and probably a likely option as far as the venue goes. So.
I don't see why we couldn't approve this warrant tonight with the proviso that that location. Has an alternate location.
Sure, yep.
Okay, so we'll get into that in particular. Before we get into the warrant, however, and thank you for that segue. Are there any questions on the budget? On any departments? I know we've been through things in several presentations and just had the public hearing, but I do want. You know, there's always that point where you want to be able to make sure that someone who had a last question. Or a last need of clarification, and I will invite the public who is attending as well to go ahead and ask that. Okay, so seeing none. Thank you for all the work on the budget. Thank you to the Budget Committee, and they will be meeting, I guess, in a couple of days. To also look at the warrant. And what I will do on the town warrant is, let me ask you the the question about the. Planning board first. We we're simply going to approve the warrant as presented. For all items that we have in a general vote at the end. Okay. I'll divide it up as we have in the past for select board recommendations. Which then the Budget Committee also sees in their work and approval of the budget. So, but my question for the plant regarding the planning board is, do they have a separate public hearing coming up?
They've actually already held it. Three weeks ago, I think, on their piece.
Bad for me to be mis-informed, but I guess I am.
There's so many of them.
Yeah, I I understand that. Great. So then we can go ahead and and do this. So. I did have a question. So I'm looking at the warrant and right now I'm looking at items, articles. One through six, and this is just for questions and clarifications only. We're not, we don't make any recommendations on any of these. But I wanted to ask about Article Four to fix those dates. Are those customary dates or do we usually use the end of the month?
Those, those are. I think they are statutory, but I'll have to look at that. The these are the same. This is the same date format we've always used. I can't say exactly.
That's all you had to tell me.
Why, but yes, they're.
Great.
Standard.
Okay, so if the board is agreeable to this. What I will do is take the warrant articles in batches to make our recommendation. And what I'll do is just sort of give that a heading. It doesn't really necessarily mean everything falls under that heading because sometimes warrants aren't as logical. As you think they are. But if there's one item, one article you want me to pull out from that consideration because you want to talk about it further. That's fine. Or we can talk about it as part of the batch as well. But it it might be easier if you had one that's specific to pull it out, so we can just vote on the rest. And then take care of that one as well. And I'll try to retain some order. So I've titled, and again, these are loose titles. They're not going to be subtitled in the warrant or anything like that. So I'm looking at seven through thirteen and I've kind of called that quote-unquote operating categories. And so it's the Article Seven for Administration. Article Eight, which is for municipal maintenance. Article Nine, that is for community services. Article Ten, that is for recreation parks, activities and open space. Article. Eleven, which is for protection, which is the fire department ambulance service, those items. Article Twelve, which is for cemetery materials and services, and Thirteen, which is roads and. And drainage. So my first question is to the rest of the board. Are there any of those articles you want to pull out because you want to discuss those separately? Okay, so seeing none, I would take a motion to carry to address. These articles with a select board recommendation of yes.
I'll make a motion to accept Articles Seven through Thirteen as just read with a select board recommendation of yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to. Put the select board recommendation is yes for Articles Seven through Thirteen. Is there any discussion on those warrant articles? Okay, great. We'll take a vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know I looked up those two dates and they are both Fridays just before the end of the month.
I was just, I guess I was wondering what the logic was to it. Some people pay their bills at the end of the month, that kind of thing. So if we move on now to. I've just taken the next two because they are, there's a lot of material in these, which is fourteen and fifteen. And again, it's a loose title of capital. So. The Article Fourteen is to enter into agreements providing for capital improvements. This is where the treasurer's financial statement comes in on bonding. And then also the town raising in Article Fifteen. The appropriate amounts for capital. Improvements. So these two seem related. So I would take a select board recommendation motion of. First of all, do you want to break these apart?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept Article Fourteen and Fifteen. Each with a select board recommendation of yes or ought to pass.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for fourteen fifteen to carry the select board recommendation of yes. Is there any discussion on these items?
Ralph, please.
Going to sound like a broken record here. I'm going to support them, but I just want to be on the record as as having reservations about the enhanced borrowing. To to take the road. The road maintenance schedule basically out of whack and. Just simply because the money is is cheap at this point to. To jack up our bonded indebtedness. And and we don't know exactly what the what the impact will be down the road when we, when we have to fix these roads. And there are more of them on the maintenance schedule as I pointed out than there would have been if we had just followed the schedule.
Thank you and so noted. I I guess I would say that. In response, and this is not, I I counter to what you're saying, Ralph. I understand where you're coming from. Is if we had a road committee that was irresponsibly acting over the years and and not. Well-supported, if you will, by internal expertise. I'd probably have some of those same reservations, but I don't think that's the case. So we have that. Is there any further discussion?
I guess I just, I'd just like to add that we're only taking one road and bringing it forward one year. So I'm I'm not overly concerned because that's the nature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and proceed with the with the vote. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is also a yes. Articles sixteen through eighteen, I've. I've put together a solid waste and regional. So those are sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, sixteen being the solid waste budget. Seventeen being the regional assessments for the Cobbe See Watershed and First Park. And then Article Eighteen, which is for the Kennebec County Tax.
I'll make a motion to approve Articles Sixteen, Seventeen and Eighteen with a select board recommendation of yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to assign a select board recommendation of yes for Articles Sixteen. Seventeen and eighteen. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is also yes. This is moving along well. And it's moving along well because you're all familiar with the pieces of the budget and how they came together. So. Nineteen and twenty really are two kinds of separate items, but I've put them together just for grouping purposes is debt service and tax relief. So not Article Nine, nineteen is debt service with the following lines. This is where we continue paying the fire truck bond, the Marana Cook Lake bond, the municipal building bond. And the municipal building and paving bond. And Article Twenty is appropriating for local tax, the local tax relief. Category. May I have a motion on these two articles?
I'll make a motion to approve Articles Nineteen and Twenty with select board recommendation of yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to assign a yes recommendation to Articles Nineteen and Twenty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Bruce is a yes. So Article Twenty-one through Twenty-eight. I would call these support services derived from associations. And so some of these associations are, I I'm going to go ahead and actually read them. So this is Twenty-one through Twenty-eight. Not going to read all of them, every word, but who they are. The Kennebec Bureau of Health, Central Maine Agency. On Aging, which is the Cohen Senior Spectrum Center, the Family Violence Agency. Marana Cook Lake and Torsey Pond Associations. The Sexual Assault Agency, the Thirty Mile River Association, the Reedfield Union Meeting House. And also. Taking. Snowmobile registration funds and signing them to the Reedfield Blizzard Busters Snowmobile Club. For their trail creation and maintenance. So that's Articles Twenty-one through Twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion. Sorry.
Can I ask a question before we get started of Eric?
Sure.
Eric, is the Cobbe See Watershed not included in these or does it come later and I've just overlooked it?
I know they're in here someplace.
It's in a different category.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure.
Services, maybe. I'll I'll have to look for that, but.
No worries. I I scrolled through, didn't see it and and perhaps too quickly. So I just wanted to make sure that was in there. I I. This, this sounds about where they should normally be, but I just, I'm sure it's in another spot.
Article seventeen, Eric, um, bottom of page three, top of page four.
Yeah, regional, there we go, regional assessments, that's where they are. Yep, right there with first park, which is.
Thank you, sorry, Catherine is up there, I apologize.
It's okay. So I'll make a motion to approve articles or to move articles twenty-one through twenty-eight with a select board recommendation of yes.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve or to um, assign a select board recommendation of yes. To articles twenty-one through twenty-eight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Guess I'll just make one closing comment on twenty-one through twenty-eight is. Um, these all are important services that end up getting delivered to the town in many respects. So I'm very appreciative of the people and volunteers who uh, do all that work.
Bruce?
In regards to this, yes.
Okay, uh, not to, not to jump on here, but I, I just want to, I just want to mention one quick thing. Sometimes I get a chance to see other different towns uh, uh, select board meetings. I know it's a very exciting life I lead, uh, but it's because I, 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 you know, I have a fascination with. Just number one, how awesome Bill Sterrett is with our production. Uh, but also just to see how different folks do different things and. Sometimes i- i- the, the, the reason I say this is because the money that we are, we have just decided to put our support behind. Is as much a support of our community as building a sidewalk or redoing a road. And the services that these particular organizations, these nonprofits offer to our town. Um, I, I, I can't say enough about from, from, from snowmobiles uh, to, to crisis centers. It's just, it's, to me, it's just a no-brainer that we support these. And so I, I, maybe it's a chance for me to say, uh, thank you to my colleagues. Uh, but I just wanted to, to mention that and let it be a part of the record.
Thank you very much.
And Dennis, they're all done by um, putting forth a letter asking um. The town to support this based on our population and the services that we know are, are being given to our residents. So it's really worthwhile.
Yes, indeed.
And these are remarks after the vote, right? I can take the vote, in other words.
Yes.
I want to make sure I don't lose track. Chris is always on the wall and stuff. Um, so I'll move on to articles twenty-nine through thirty-five. Um, again, a loose title might be management of financial uh, factors. Boy, that's, I could be a bureaucrat tonight. Um, so article twenty-nine uh, is um, the unclassified uh, budget uh, category. Uh, for things like the Rebuild Enterprise Fund, uh, setting aside money for uh, reevaluation, overdraft and abatements. Uh, thirty is uh, for general assistance. Uh, thirty-one is the expenditure of revenues um, that we receive uh, from uh. Federal, state and, and private grants sources. Uh, thirty-two is uh, estimated revenues um, uh, that we would apply uh, to reduce the tax commitment. And there's a very long list of those. Um, article thirty-three is the town's uh. Appropriating uh, designated funds to reduce tax commitment. Uh, article thirty-four is uh, twenty-five thousand dollars uh, for purposes to meet contingencies. This is our contingency budget. Uh, and thirty-five is uh, a move from the unassigned fund balance to reduce the total tax commitment. So there's actually a lot of. Um, affect, if you will, on real estate taxes to benefit, if you will. Uh, of uh, towns, oh, on this particular series of uh, items. So twenty-nine through thirty-five.
I'll make a motion to um, accept articles twenty-nine through thirty-five with a select board recommendation of yes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for twenty-nine and thirty-five to carry the select board recommendations of yes. Um, is there any discussion? Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is a yes. So now we're at thirty-six, so we're beyond now um, any um. Items that need to carry select word recommendations. So the final articles of thirty-one, thirty-six, if you will, through forty-two. And um, this is just like at the beginning when we had one through six, I believe it was. To um, go ahead and just um, see if anybody had any items that they. Uh, wanted to discuss and I'm probably going to make sure that we discuss article forty because I. Um, I penned that at the very last minute and I want to make sure that the rest of the board is on, on board with that. So are there any questions on thirty-six through forty-two? Or thoughts, recommendations? Catherine, you've been involved with uh, forty uh, in terms of um, making sure that we. Asked a question regarding uh, fiber. I tried to make it as simple and as direct as possible. Um, it could be federal money coming in or whatever. Uh, we already have the means and authorities to deal with that. So. I tried not to encumber this with a lot of language about funding. Uh, our job was to see, I thought in the question, um, just what the feeling was of townspeople towards having. Um, uh, this considered.
I think it's worded perfectly. Um, it just asks if they want us to continue moving in this direction. Um, it's very general. It doesn't have anything to do with funding. Um, those specifics and funding issues would come at a later date.
Yeah, and it's, it's advisory, so it doesn't actually pass fail. It uh, advises us. And if it did not get a lot of vote, um, for some reason, then it would be who of us to be better explainers of what we want to do. Uh, before we do put something to a vote that carries uh, financial interest. Doesn't mean we necessarily stop, but it means we do, um, we have more homework than we thought, perhaps. Uh, and if it has an overwhelming endorsement, then we know, gee, that's really a priority for people in their lives. And um, and we, we want to make sure to uh, honor that.
Yes, and um, we're planning, probably Eric and I will end up being the authors on. Putting together a survey-ish questionnaire poll. Um, that will be available at the um, voting location, whether that's at the Kent Hill School or in a alternate location. Um, that people can pick up and turn in while they're there, or they can take it and send it back. We'll also post it online and we're considering mailing it under separate cover for those who uh, request an absentee ballot. Uh, because it's not a vote. Um, but just, we figured these are the people who would be voting. Or the most likely people who would be voting next year if we have a another article at town meeting. Because these are the people coming to town meeting. Um, and so they could give us more information about the services they have and the services they want.
Great, and so we do have some information we've collected. I'm assuming this is the exact same information. So we'd be able to differentiate, right?
It would be different information. I mean, similar, but yes.
Right, so it's not somebody commenting twice, if you will, on the same information. It's augmenting what we have.
Yes.
Okay, and it's non-warrant, so we, we'll, we'll get off that now. Um, so now we're back to the full warrant. Um, and what I'd like to ask Eric, um, well, first of all, I would say uh, you should put Dennis Price as the vice chair. On the last page.
Oh, yeah. We can fix that.
So there's one fixed for you. Um, where are we with legal review of this?
Uh, complete.
Okay, so forty was okay with us? I mean, um, the, the non-advisory, the advisory one, I mean?
Yeah, that, that was actually uh, Kristen's uh, slightly modified language that was included in the warrant. Um, I guess the, the one thing I, I'm still waiting on, um, I guess the, 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 I've gotten. Uh, the, the, the language for the um. Treasurer's statement uh, is, is identical to the last time we put one of these on. Uh, and we did discuss it with our bond counsel, but she hasn't given me her final, final uh, answer on that, but. That's about the only piece that is out. I wouldn't even call it outstanding. That's the only piece that's not certain, in my view.
Um, okay.
But it's pretty darn certain.
I guess what I'm trying to do is to approve the warrant tonight in a fashion that allows uh. Flexibility on those couple of items so that um, we don't have to have a special select board meeting to. Reopen the warrant and, and discuss it. So you'll tell me if that's, and it's always a possibility. So for example, it's always a possibility that um, the budget committee of votes uh, know on every single item we just voted yes on. I don't think that's going to happen, but um, so there's always a possibility we may need to revisit this, but I don't think that's, that's the case. So I'm going to make the motion that we um, accept the town meeting warrant. A secret ballot as printed with the proviso that we authorize the town manager to um. Change the location uh, on the language which says Kent Hill Elphon Athletic Center with the address. Um, and, and give him the flexibility to do that, to finalize the bond language and to um. Put Mr. Price's vice chair. Um, so with those um, provisos, um, I'm going to go ahead and move. Uh, and all carrying all the approvals or yeses recommendations that we made tonight.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. So um, thank you very much. Um, we've been doing this is. The, in these groupings for the last few years and I, I don't know, Catherine, you're our historian. Maybe they used to do it every single one. One at a time, I don't know. Um, I think I went to some board meetings where it did, but I'm not even sure if that was this town. Uh, but uh.
I think we stopped that about uh, fifteen years ago, eighty-twelve. Yeah, it was long.
Well, it works. Um, so we're done with that and I asked at the beginning if we could. Add to the agenda of just a brief discussion about moving to live meetings just to see where. People, what people's thinking were, was in that. Um, I'm very comfortable with uh, continuing Zoom if we need to for another couple of meetings or so. Um, you know, whatever happens, uh, we, we need to follow the right advice on that, I think. Um, but I did want to just get a sense of the board. I'm a little frustrated that um, particularly on public hearings. We've not been able to get interaction with citizens to decree. I think that is helpful. I think it's been mentioned before, there's a lot of trust in this board, it's built up over the years. And so that's part of a factor of that occurring perhaps. Um, maybe I'm overthinking it, uh, but in any case, um, you know, uh. I, I think it, I think it's just a good point time to have a quick uh, conversation about that. Probably the next meeting would be Zoom, but I don't know. What do you think?
Um, I would like to, to suggest maybe something that we've done before, which is. To meet in person, but perhaps um, with a, a limited audience uh, inclusion. Um, I, I, either way, I'm, I'm, you know, I acquiesce to the board, but I, I feel comfortable with that. Um, you know, a little bit more now, uh, but I understand that might not be the case with everyone, so. Um, but I, I just wanted to start the conversation.
I'm all for us meeting in person again. I prefer that. I mean, I love the not having to travel, but. I much prefer that we have our public meetings in public. Um, and let's keep in mind that as of May twenty, well. As of last Friday, we can now be at fifty percent capacity inside. Right?
Yep.
And then seventy-five percent at the end of May on May twenty-fourth.
That is correct.
So I, I like Dennis's suggestion of um, Eric, if you can give us a, a room limit with social distancing. Um, then we can post a number of public that may attend, um, so that people know in advance that they can be there.
Other thoughts?
I'm all for going in person.
Well, Ralph, you're traveling to, down to the town office anyhow. Would you like some faces in the same room with you?
I, I do favor in person, just as long as we are in compliance with whatever the state guidelines are. At the particular point in time where we decide to go back to that.
Yeah.
I think the meetings are much more productive when they're in person and as has been noted. Uh, the opportunity for public participation is greatly enhanced.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would just add to that and say, I hope that. Even though we acknowledge that the uh, in-person meetings have a certain effectiveness. I think that some folks have also benefited from the Zoom meetings. Um, so, so I, I, I know that we, we do a lot of broadcasting, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but, but I would hope that we would be able to continue having Zoom links for our meetings.
Ken, and we will.
Thank you, sir.
I think Zoom is here to stay.
Amen.
That's right.
So it, if it pleasures the rest of the board, I would just ask that you just let Dennis and I and Eric. In our agenda setting, make those decisions based on guidance from meeting to meeting. Um, my default would be to try to consider live meetings first uh, and move in that direction. Maybe not the next meeting, but we'll see. Um, I'd really like to get that made, public hearing to be a live meeting.
Yes, indeed.
Would even entertain looking at a larger space uh, at one of the schools uh, if, if, if uh. If that was appropriate, so. You know, I, I, I don't think we're going to have a huge uptick in participation necessarily at that meeting. Uh, but we do need to start thinking in, 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 in that direction. So is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, our next meeting is until the twentieth of April, so that's.
Yeah, exactly. So we're, we're quite a ways out.
Yeah, I think we're set.
I think.
I think that's a great time to resume.
Thumbs up, everybody thumbs up. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
There we go.
Um, well, thank you. You know, the, I mean, the other thing I would just mention on Zoom. We, we are following guidance. There is state law that talks about participation and so forth. I don't believe we, if we meet. Once the state of emergency has ended, I'm, I think we can have a hybrid meeting during the state of emergency. In other words, a board member can attend. We'll check this out. But I believe a board member can attend remotely, but I believe once we're all live and there isn't a state in for emergency anymore. You have to attend in order to vote. I don't think.
That, that's right, Bruce.
Able to do that, so just a thought. So, thank you.
The audience could still be on Zoom.
I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, I think we have another tool for people to reach us.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to move to adjourn, please.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. Uh, Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Now, well, yes, as well. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, have a great night.
Kristen for taking notes. Uh, thank you, Bill, for the broadcast. Good night, everybody. Thank you, Eric.
Great, thank you.